I would like to call the Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I do have one announcement this evening. I would actually like to offer a thank you to Ben's Containers and Rubbish on West Street in Douglas for the loan of eight rubbish barrels for use by the nonprofit groups in Douglas, and through the support of him and the citizens of Douglas groups such as the Boy Scouts, the Simon Fairfield Library, the Historical Society, the Youth Soccer League, and the Sunshine Club have been able to raise more than $5,000 by the collection and redemption and deposit of bottles and cans. So, thank you to Ben's Container. Is there anyone here for anything that's not currently posted on our agenda? So, seeing is none. We'll go right into the first agenda item, which is the Rhode Island, Mass., Connecticut relay race for Saturday, August 27th, 2022, and possible votes. And I believe this gentleman is here for that?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Hello, good evening. I'm Matt Anderson. I am from Hartford Marathon Foundation. I'm looking for approval to put on our third running of the Rymicon Relay on Saturday, August 27th. We started in 2019, took a year off, like everything, and did it again in 2021 with another successful year. And we're looking to continue with the same operations we did with our new date. And then, for those not familiar, this is a 95-mile relay race that starts in Lincoln, Rhode Island, goes up along the Blackstone River, bikeway, cuts through Massachusetts, and along the Blackstone, and then continues onto the Snet Trail, which runs through Douglas, and then onward into Connecticut, all the way to Hartford. It's 95 miles, as I mentioned, 18 different relay legs, teams of three or six are continuously running and driving between exchange zones to complete the 95-mile journey. We've sold it out the past two runnings, when we had, we have about 130 teams each year do it. And with the nature of the race, we start, teams run at different paces, so we start between 4:00 AM and 9:00 AM. So, as they come through town, it's only the 130 teams, but they're spread out over four hours. So, it is a minimal impact to the community, but we still make important strides to make sure it's safe and secure, like we have done in the past. And with that, we've hired and plan to do again an officer at Route 96 for the crossing on South Street, and then we'll also position a volunteer at Southeast for the duration of the time as runners are crossing, because those were the two roads we established as the biggest concern. And then, the last part that's in conjunction with the town is Exchange Number Four of the race is actually at the Depot Street parking area. I happy to answer any questions or concerns.
You racing in it, Dave?
I'm gonna pass. I appreciate the suggestion.
We could do it. I think the five of us could win that thing.
Five of us could do one leg, a mile apiece. It'd go into the hours of darkness, but we'd get it done.
Can't use anything motorized.
Never ask a question that you don't know the answer to, but I'm just curious, in regards to the terrain of the Snet and surrounding areas and trails that you'd be using, is it particularly favorable for this type of race? Is this kind of a draw or helpful for you guys?
You're talking about the gnarliness of the Snet? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, the natural topographic look and feel.
I like gnarly.
We, the varying terrains, we start on a paved trail, you know, it does touch, it goes on roads, sidewalks, gravel trails. I will say the section, I think, from Aldridge Street up in Hugsbridge to right before we get to Douglas is probably the toughest section of trail on the entire route. But, once it gets to Douglas, it's fairly tame, gravel, a little bit of grass, but it's easier to run than to bike, I think, personally.
If the rest of us pitched in and paid an admittance fee, would you allow Selectman Bonin to run the entire 95 miles?
As long as he can maintain 10 minutes and 30 seconds per mile, we'd allow it. That's our pace.
We might have to run behind him with tools and sticks to prod him, but I think we could do that.
I'm not gonna use the cable to kind of promote my athletic prowess, but I could do that for 13.1, a couple of years ago, anyway. So, anyway, thank you.
It could go on for another six or seven times over.
I know, it's too much.
You do realize that Kevin trained?
We do.
No, for running.
We're moving this a lot. Chief Vincent does not require an ambulance for this race?
Doesn't seem that way.
He's on.
He's on the call. He was on the call.
Yeah.
I confirmed with him, he is not requiring for this.
We do not require a detail.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. I see no issues. Anybody want to throw a motion at this?
Sure, I will make a motion that we approve the use of the town's roads and access points to the Snet for the Rhode Island, Mass., Connecticut relay race, starting on Saturday, August 27th, with the impact of the town being 7:00 to 12:00 PM.
Use the word gnarly in the motion.
Somewhere, including the gnarly trails.
And we wish everyone a gnarly time.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Second agenda item.
Yeah. Thank you, Matt, you're good.
Yeah, you're all set. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to you guys for your continued support of the race and allowing us to pass through town. We really appreciate it. We appreciate all the towns along the way, and we look forward to another great year. And if you could work on the weather, that would be perfect.
At some point, we'll get a selectman to participate in this. It's probably not gonna be this board, but someday.
I've got a random question, just for the group of, if you don't mind me asking. Is there any trails, groups in town, trail committees, any kind of volunteer organizations that are passionate about that, that may be interested in being reached out to more about this?
Probably the Bay State Trail Riders Association.
Open Space.
The Bay State Trail Riders Association?
Oh, and the Open Spaces Committee.
And the Open Space Committee with the town.
I appreciate it. Yeah, we're just, we always look for volunteers, so we like to make connections with local groups if we can. So, just your two cents is appreciated. All right. I'll let you enjoy your rest of your evening. Thank you so much.
Thanks, have a good night.
Take care.
Okay, so, we're going to discuss ARPA spending and reporting and possible votes.
So, this is a sticky wicket.
My favorite.
That's why I couldn't promise you a super short meeting, but it won't be long either. The town received ARPA from two distributions. One was for local municipalities, and the other was our share of Worcester County's allocation, because we don't have county government. So, the money was split up by population. So, the total that Douglas has received is $2,701,520. When ARPA was first released, this was a very restrictive program. When we first heard that this money would be coming from the federal government, the impulse was, let's have a committee, let's hear about all the projects we need to do, and the committee will sort it out. And then, we kind of backed off for two reasons. One is, the restrictions were very tight. So, we had to try to find things that the town needed that would be eligible to fund, and most of that centered around water infrastructure, and the extension of water service or the improvement of water service to certain types of areas. And there were these little tiny exceptions, maybe you could do an HVAC project on a public safety building because you were recirculating air in a critical piece of infrastructure. The United States Treasury, in its infinite wisdom, has now released a completely new set of guidance that is a great deal more liberal than the initial guidance that was put out. And Gene was just at a conference where CLA, which is now, they've absorbed almost every municipal consultancy there is, and CLA is one of the last ones left, they had a partner there presenting on all of the eligible expenses. Lisa is gonna take that 66-page PowerPoint presentation and put it in SharePoint. If you want a hard copy, just ask, and we'll produce one for you. But, it really marches through, it's a long document, but it marches through in a very crisp fashion, all of the things that are now eligible for ARPA spending. So, it's a good deal more than it was before. That takes us back to, we should have a committee conversation, because we don't want to allocate ARPA funds that were given to the town on a first-come, first-served basis. We would like to have a thoughtful, transparent process of rank ordering like we do with everything else. My recommendation to the Select Board is that that committee really should be you. There are, the executive function in town government, sometimes you can allocate or delegate responsibility for capital projects and all getting down in the weeds and having all those meetings that go on for hours and rating systems and people going back and forth. This is pretty straightforward. You need a view of the whole town, you need to have a set of priorities in your own mind of what you want to do. It's not been raised from the taxpayer, so it's not hitting our budget in any way, shape, or form, unless you take on things that will have operating expenses in the future. But, for the most part, basically have, what, we've only spent $72,404, and each of those times that we spent money on an ARPA-funded project, we came to this board for approval. So, you've already, there was this COVID testing kits that we purchased, there was some money for STANTEC for the engineering around the expansion of the water system, and I think it's one other small expense. And then, the consultant himself is like $1,500, because of the hours he's given us. But, we have a report coming up at the end of April, and we'll report that $72,404 plus the consultant's fee. Then, after that, I think we need to hit the ground running and get the money out the door. We don't have a limitless time in which to spend the money. It's gotta be out of the door by the end of...
Total of four years.
Total of four years, but we've already, it's already been here.
2024.
Yep. So, we've got three years left. Now, it's plenty of time to spend 2.7 million, whatever's left, 2.6 and change. I have some props, though. I think the, before I pass this out, what Gene is looking for, because we're gonna be in the single audit this year, and we're gonna have to document all of our federal funds very carefully, she's requesting that the board take a formal vote to accept all the ARPA money and approve its use for town purposes. But, more importantly, it's the acceptance of the grant. The paper trail, I mean, I'm not entirely sure it's all that necessary, but the paper trail is much cleaner, admittedly, if, when we get grant funds, the Select Board is actually saying that you will accept it and that you will spend it according to the regulations, and you can delegate that to the department heads, the town administrator, whoever you see fit. But, you, formally, you're supposed to be accepting the funds. So, at your next full meeting, we'll have a list of all the grants that we've gotten over the past year that may not have expended the money yet, and then you can have those votes. But, ARPA, since it's on the agenda tonight, Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind putting that to a vote at the appropriate time. Then, I want to come back to a thought that we've had in conversations with some of our employees.
You want to make said motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept $2,701,520.
$2,701, yep.
$2,701,520.
$701,520.
Thank you.
Why don't you just accept all the money?
We're printing it. Can't say it, but we'll print it. I'll make, amend my awful motion to say that I will take from the federal government $2,701,520, and that's it.
Motion was made and seconded, and I noticed the look from Gene when he heard "printing money." Gene, does that, Felicity, sit down in your office with...
No, because she has to admit that it was printed, it's deficit spending by the federal government.
And we have to spend it. We can't just squirrel this away.
No, I can't squirrel it away.
Federal money laundering.
They don't even bother to launder it, they just put it out.
Please note who's not guilty of any of these phrases, Gene.
I said "federal."
So, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Two selectmen have to report to Gene's office after the meeting.
I'm having a flashback to a college course where we actually covered open market operations and how the Federal Reserve actually issues currency to be spent by the federal government. It's fascinating. It's really pure fiat, just, anyway. But, we buy our own bonds and release the cash into the economy. Fabulous. And when, we had two collective bargaining units approach the town and ask that hazard pay or extra duty pay be considered as part of the conversation. They are eligible expenses. If you look at the presentation that Gene got, and then that we're gonna forward to you from CLA, there's a fairly clear section there that authorizes or says that the Act authorizes spending for hazard pay. Just be mindful of the fact that there are caps, and how much an individual can earn in total and how much they can be compensated on an hourly basis. Selectman Cortez, the two public safety chiefs, and I sat down with the two bargaining units, and we were careful to say that this is not a negotiation, because this is not an item that is to be bargained. This is grant money that has come in, but we are open to a conversation. And we were able to narrow the discussion down to some things that we thought were fair. You know, originally, Douglas was firmly in the column with many other municipalities that said, "We pay people to respond to emergencies, period." So, if you were working while we were having an emergency, then all the power to you, you got your paycheck, thank you for your service. And it sounds a little blunt, but really, that's what it boils down to, so there's no need to dress it up. And then, I thought that we had a fruitful conversation with the representatives from the collective bargaining units, because we were reminded of a couple of important factors, one of which is, early in 2020, we were under a declared state of emergency, but we did not have the resources, nor did we understand enough about COVID-19 to actually protect our employees who are being sent into danger. Now, typically, we send firefighters into fires, we buy their turnout gear and their breathing apparatus and all the equipment they need. We provide sidearms and body, bulletproof vests, and some use body armor, and other equipment to police departments when they go into harm's way. Sending somebody out to a COVID call, when you know it's a highly transmissible disease, and you may or may not have a fresh N95, or set of gloves, or gowns to put people in, you're saying you're being exposed to some extra danger. We also didn't know enough about the transmissibility of the disease to understand what the risk would be having everybody working together in the same place, until some people started getting sick. We had half the fire department out. So, we kind of narrowed the conversation down to, from the date of the declared emergency, which was March 10th, 2020, to the end of the first surge or first spike in cases was June 30th, 2020. And then, we asked the departments to pull together spreadsheets, who worked how many hours? Because that is, give us a rough estimate of what it would cost to provide hazard pay to people at an hourly rate. So, at the risk of handing out, one to one handout at the same time, they look different, one is police, the other is fire, take one of each, and it gives you a sense of the number of hours we're talking about. The board or any committee that is looking to fund this activity would have to contemplate a couple of things. One of which is, do you want to compensate hazard exposure, or do you want to compensate public service that was done under the command of the Unified Command System that we had in place that was above and beyond or outside the job description of the person doing that? Whether or not they were directly exposed to hazard or not. These are, these can be thorny issues, right? Because when you decide it one way, you're basically saying a bunch of people won't be eligible for it, and some people will be eligible for it. We're not ready for a vote on this tonight, but I wanted to give you a sense of some of the issues we've had to think through. Volunteers are not eligible for any compensation. They are volunteers. So, the ARPA is very clear about that. But, you may compensate call or per diem staff that responded, because they were already on the payroll, they're paid. So, they're coming in and rendering the service as employees of the town. So, that was one issue, right? One issue is what is eligible, and now, the universe of things that can be funded through ARPA is much broader than it was a few months ago. But, perhaps the most important limit in our ARPA conversation is, we have engaged in a substantial economic development project. One leg of the stool that's holding the stool up is a federal grant of several million dollars. If we were not to get that grant, and we wanted the project to continue to go forward, we would have to work with our consultant to determine, is it eligible for ARPA funding? And if it is, it would probably take almost all of the town's ARPA funds to complete the project. In the last week, we have received an indication that our federal application is in a very strong position, and that we are required only to do a couple more things, namely, some advertisement in the Worcester Telegram for three days and about a comment period thereafter. And after that, we will have some indication of whether or not we've been awarded the grant or not, with all the signs being very positive. So, I think it's fair to say that it is timely now to say, the ARPA funds that remain to the town probably won't be obligated at all to do the economic development project. The combination of MassWorks and the EDA grant and contributions by the companies that are building these warehouses will cover the whole project, and we will neither use taxpayer money nor will we use ARPA money. So, I think, just in the last two weeks, we've had a really significant shift in what the ARPA money means to the town of Douglas. So, I think one question presented to you is, do you want to have a committee outside of the board? Do you want to have the board be the committee? Do you want to invite members of FINCOM, perhaps, to participate? And I don't think you have to decide tonight, but I think you have to decide soon, so that the committee can get to work and allocate the funds.
In my opinion, is on two points of the questions that you have, anyway, that you posed. So, one, I think it should stay with the Board of Selectmen. I don't think creating another committee is really necessary on that aspect of it. And as for, like, eligibility under the ARPA, you know, again, my opinion is for other guys that are involved in it, but I think it's, absolutely should go firefighters and police, the ones that were active duty, but I think it should be anybody that was having their regular roles modified to actually step in and assist with public service and meal delivery or whatever else that it is. They should also be eligible for some form of hazardous duty pay or however we want to label it.
I feel the same. When anything like this happens, it's unprecedented, it's a side of the virus, but when any emergency like this happens, endemic or any other way, it's usually public safety whose lives get overturned, and they're expected, and as you say, they get paid for it, but they're expected to probably work a lot more hours in a lot more difficult circumstances than I think most other employees would be expected to do, so.
The military kind of looks at it, like, you assume a risk when you go into, like, the military or police or fire. And the way the military issues hazardous duty pay is when it's outside or well beyond what they would consider to be the assumed risk. You know, I think a global pandemic definitely qualifies.
It forces people to think about things they didn't think about normally, which, is it safe to wear my uniform home into my house? Or do I, you know, it took us all a long time to remember to put our masks on before we got out of our car, went into any place. All of those little things added up to just extra things to think about at work.
I thought we locked the door, Bob and Eric just came in.
Outside the public safety, how far out do you go with the people who are affected? They're working, like you're talking about food service and stuff like that. So, people that are exposed, or are they working extra hours? Is there a difference between the two?
I will tell you that, yeah, so, the FEMA has a paperwork trail that we fill out during an emergency, and we allocate resources, and we document those allocations using forms. And all those forms are filed timely. So, as we expanded the emergency response, we wrote down people's roles and what they were charged to do above and beyond their normal jobs. So, the town engineer was assigned to procurement for the food service program. The adult social center director ran that program after the schools declined to run it. We had cafeteria workers at the schools that were coming to work every day and doing, or a couple of times a week, extra, and doing things that had nothing to do with their school lunch program responsibilities under their Teamster contract. And we had talked with the Teamsters about extending the contract and eventually did not actually do that, because it wasn't part of their school responsibility. Those people got paid, they got paid out of, for their straight time, out of our food service program filings for FEMA, if I'm correct, Lisa.
Yes.
So, if we go back and look at those, the paperwork, you'll see who was assigned to what role by the Unified Command, and that was your response team for our town hall staff. Public safety was public safety. They did what they were tasked to do, because they were on payroll for that.
I get all that. My question is, goes to hazard pay.
Right.
So, are they entitled to hazard pay? That's what my question is.
I wouldn't, in their case, it's not hazard pay, it's extra pay, right?
Well, is that out of ARPA or out of FEMA?
So, ARPA, the term they're using...
Who's gonna get?
I'm using the term hazard. Hazard is not an ARPA term.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm restricting the conversation, hazard, I'm by my own choice. The ARPA's term is extra pay. And so, there's a whole page in the document that Lisa's gonna send around. This is what we mean by being eligible for extra pay. And there are, you can see that, emergency response activities are a fundable umbrella. So, that means that everybody on these sheets would be eligible as well. When you say hazard, you're gonna take a lot of people out of the equation.
Yeah, and that's what I want clarity on.
Yep. It's about, mathematically, it's about 33% of the expenditure would be non-public safety, direct contact people.
Yes, Gene.
The only thing I would want done, the party votes taken, again, that is not meant to be a comprehensive document. That was strictly an overview at a very quick pace, is that anything voted, anything considered to be voted on, be funded by our consultant prior to the vote.
Yep.
So I would outline whatever the consideration is and we get the approval because the last thing I want to happen is that we pay it and then two years, four years down the road, they're saying, uh-uh. And there's some communities, you know, Matt would know better than I, that are not doing this at all. They're choosing not to do any of the premium pay by choice. And they have their own committees, their own reasons, their own projects. But I would definitely want that, whatever list. And again, you know, we've been doing it as a first come, first served for some of these items. I would want to see that committee and all the projects together before any votes taken.
I do, that's fair. I mean, I don't think we're going to take any action on it tonight. I think it's understanding what it is and giving us a chance to kind of digest it a little bit.
I think if and when we did take action, we'd just label it as preliminary until the consultant looks at it.
I'm giving you these numbers tonight because I think, just to get your head wrapped around what it means. It's because it's too hard to imagine it, but when you see names and hours and a rate calculated out to a bottom line, you have a sense of what it means.
All in, it's about 10% of our ARPA take.
Yeah. Depending on how you define eligibility. For your purposes, yeah, 10%.
I, I know we've got economic development going on and I know we may not need some ARPA money. Would feel very comfortable though, waiting a while to make certain that we don't say, oh shoot, we should have had a little more pensions.
To be, a little bit, well, I'll praise Gene. It's easy to do. Right? But the whole team pulled together and Gene was an important reason why we did it this way, but the whole team pulled together behind the notion that just because the federal government gave us CARES Act funds, we weren't going to go out and spend it like candy. It had been given to us for a specific purpose, to respond to a pandemic. So we bought things that we should have. Personal protective equipment, we paid for laundry service, we did outreach to vulnerable populations, we fed vulnerable populations when it was hard to find food and when everybody was locked up in their homes and scared. Those things sound like they're really right on point, right? We didn't buy turnout gear, we didn't do all these general obligation operational expenditures and then try to justify it as either a FEMA expense or CARES Act expense. The other thing that Douglas did though, a lot of other communities didn't do is we maximized our FEMA reimbursement before we went for CARES. FEMA was more tightly defined, so if it wasn't eligible for FEMA, it might have been picked up by CARES. But if some communities, because FEMA's a lot of work, said, well, if it's all covered by CARES, well, we'll just spend all our CARES Act money, right? We ended up turning back over $400,000.
You're not going to get hurt again.
But sometimes it's important to know what we did.
It was a lot.
It was a lot.
It was a lot. We did go for a sec. We got permission to spend extra money for the second ambulance, you know, we did change.
It did change, but I think our original allocation was in the 800s and I think we'd spent a little bit more than half, but turned the rest back because it was the right thing to do. It was responsible management. I have a completely different attitude towards ARPA, to be blunt, right? They just threw 2.7 million bucks at us. There's a bunch of eligible expenses that the town really needs and why staddle the ratepayers and taxpayers of the water sewer department or the whole town respectively with things that we could have paid for with federal money? So as far as I'm concerned, we should find every single thing we can and spend out the full 2.7 and not think twice about it. Because this isn't about the response. This is about economic recovery and resilience and that's a different target than responding to the emergency itself.
And it's broad enough where you can spend every, you know, like Matt said, there's no restriction. I mean, not to the extent that CARES was. CARES was restricted to the pandemic. This is not under that same guideline. There are categories you have to adhere to, but you can spend all of the 2.7 million dollars.
Now, having said that, my town is trying to, is spending ARPA money to buy an ambulance. And I don't, I don't feel that like that's something that we should be doing because that's a capital expense. It's a regular operating expense of any town that has a fire, an ambulance department. And I just am very worried that when we go to audit, we're going to be asked, the residents of Westport are going to be asked to pay for that ambulance. And I'm not real excited about doing it. So that's just editorializing, but by way of example.
Quite honestly, I, in my mind, I knew this issue was coming up and I thought 5%, 7% of ARPA would be there. This is a little higher than that, but I'm reminded of just a, a personal situation where, you know, that we needed the ambulance to come take care of a family member in the heat of COVID, knowing that, well, protect my mother-in-law's privacy, but I just guess I didn't. Knowing full well that she had COVID and it was just like, thank goodness we had, you know, trained professionals.
There was a swing and a miss on that one.
She's not watching. But no, and I, I get that. I think, I think this is a way in which we can recognize the, the dangers and the commitment to the townspeople. But again, I came here thinking 5% to 7%.
I think that's where we started too. I guess only when we actually, because remember it's 24/7, so you gotta, you can't just count the days, you gotta count the hours because it's all 24 every day. And that's what punched, punched the number pretty good. Because when we were staffing the second ambulance, we had, that's basically doubled the compliment at the fire department that we would normally have.
Anything else on this topic?
So you should dock it, Mr. Chairman, for your next meeting.
Yeah, we'll put this on the next agenda.
So if you want to serve as the committee, we'll have to work on a procedure for you. So maybe that's what you can vote on next time and then open up for proposals and it'd be a big part of your agenda in June, July.
Any thoughts from anyone else?
I do think collecting input from all parties, people paying attention in town who may have ideas, maybe we have a future meeting, open it up to townspeople that maybe make recommendations on things that we should consider.
Yeah.
But I do believe the buck stops with this board, so I'm, I'm comfortable with a proper outreach of being in control of those monies.
I agree.
Mike, you good?
I'm good.
You're good? All right. So we'll move on to review public safety and highway needs reports and dissolve the committee with possible votes. That is you, sir.
So first of all, I'd like to thank the representatives of all three departments. They did a very good job and put a lot of hard work into it. We were able, we had our first meeting December 22nd, our last meeting on February 16th. We had a total of five meetings and they were able to identify their current needs as well as their projected needs 20-plus years out. At this, at this point, I suggested to the committee, which they all voted to send it back here to go to the next step. It's all not a capital, capitalists every year for all three of them, for, for different things. I would think that at this point, we may want to consider doing a design development to see what, what can be done with that information, whether it's a renovation, whether it's a combined structure for all three departments, whether it's one for each or two buildings. Don't, don't know what that is. You have, you have all good information, it shows exactly what, what they need, how they operate, what their staffing level is. So you have a good menu for a design professional to be able to put that together.
Makes sense. And we get to ask them to say, single building, multiple buildings, kind of a combination thereof or kind of leave it to them?
What I did is that I tried to hold the committee to just, through each department, to just identifying what their needs are and what they would want to help their department get to where they need to be. And they did a very good job in doing that and it's outlined very clearly on all three departments. It was in our last meeting, it was in our folders, it's up on SharePoint now.
I have their reports.
Didn't see any reason, I'd print it all back out again.
All right. So it probably makes sense to, well, we want to dissolve this current committee.
Well, actually, it is dissolved now by, by you accepting the report. So it automatically gets dissolved according to Robert's rules. So unless you recommit it to, to something else to do, the committee is done. So you don't have to take a motion or any action on it.
Except to accept the report.
By me making the report, it's accepted, unless they don't accept it, but you can accept the report either way.
Well, I guess it's, I mean, that's true, but the, the belts and suspenders approach would be that the committee, the authorizing committee.
I just read that stupid little Robert rule so many times, just trying to get a clear of my head as to what we're properly supposed to do with it, so.
And right when you think you got it, you don't. That's how I found it anyway.
But the safest way is to formally accept it as the town administrator suggests and then there's no doubt in anybody's mind, I guess.
Well, I can attest that the report is in my hands, so I accept it and would make that motion.
I will second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mike, thank you for sitting on that board and getting that put together and, you know, thank you to all the partners.
It was a good process, we moved through it. Do we want to put it on our next, next agenda or upcoming agenda to figure out what the next step is with this?
That would probably make sense.
Something, we need to consider what to do with it, otherwise it's a waste of effort.
Does it make sense to do it next meeting or wait until after town meeting? Because I know that we're pretty.
Getting ahead of yourself because that's an open question, right? What is your next meeting?
Yeah, that's true.
The second, the third, and then after that, 17th.
I won't be here the third.
Let's do 17th.
So we'll do it on the 17th.
Can we have our second meeting, the May 2nd meeting be a May 3rd meeting? Do we have to have two meetings, one after another, two nights in a row?
Usually there's some cleanup stuff last minute, but I can't think of any reason why we couldn't. Is there any reason why we couldn't do that, Matt?
It's like someone's got.
The posted meeting, you're posting a meeting, you post anything on the agenda you want to post.
Yeah, so we'll ditch the second and just do the third.
Two nights in a row.
Well, the second's town meeting.
Typically.
Oh, yeah.
That's what he's saying. We have a meeting.
Yeah, flip that. We'll dump the meeting on the.
The third.
On the third.
And then we have our next one on the 17th.
Which you will be in attendance.
I will try. Don't see any reason why I wouldn't.
So that brings me to, do you want this on the 17th meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right.
All right. Moving right along to approving minutes and possible votes.
Make a motion that we approve the Tuesday, March 15, 2022 meeting minutes?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Then I'll make a motion that we approve the April 5 executive session minutes, retaining all.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, I wasn't present. All right. You report.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have the unmitigated pleasure to report that the EV chargers are back online. So if you've been coming to town hall to charge your electric car and you stopped because they were broken, please come back, we got them fixed. It looks like the original set was not installed properly because they needed to be derated. In other words, originally each, each connection was supposed to have its own circuit. We were going to have four circuits, so four cars could charge at full power from the building. Supply chain constraints, yada, 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 right? So we ended up buying chargers that shared a circuit. So there were two full circuits, but there are two connections on each charger. So if two cars were plugged in at the same time, on the same charger, they would be sharing a circuit. It's called derating. The unit's supposed to make that adjustment and it wasn't. So we overloaded the circuits and the charges blew out. It took our dear friends at EV Connect no less than five weeks from the initial ticket to the actual completion of the restoration. So they had the gall to ask me today, what do you think of our customer service? Which is a great question to ask me after making me wait five weeks. But I know we have several car owners locally, different parts of town that were using the charges. Come on back, they're working again. We removed one of the gym windows this weekend. It looks like they put it back. With a lack of anything better to do, they put it back. They removed the asbestos and then put it back. But that's the project, we should get our third quote this week and then finally complete the quotes for the asbestos removal. They're all coming in within $1,000 of each other, so you know that, that pretty much look like the same thing. Once that's done, we'll coordinate between the asbestos removal and the window installation and that project will be well underway. We're opening bids for the brush truck on Friday. So that's a grant that, assistance firefighters grant that we got out of FEMA, that will pay for the lion's share of that new piece of apparatus. So we're looking to get three or four bids there because we did amend the bid package since extended cabs are not really available right now, seem to be very hard to get. We are going to allow a standard cab, standard chassis. But we're still going to rule out crew cabs, crew cabs are unresponsive. They're too, they extend the wheelbase too far. I'm going to invite Bob and Eric up because we have a lot to talk about economic development. I'll talk in general terms and we'll let Bob fill in the details. In general terms, I'll, I'll do a lot of the communication piece because that's, we've, obviously, we're going to be disrupting the town somewhat with digging up the roads. So the communication plan, I don't, as, to use Bob's words, we haven't let, left any base uncovered at all. So there are message boards out that are warning people that construction may begin as soon as May 9th. It's been put out there on social media, we're putting it on the town website. A mailing went out late today to 234 households in that part of town. Please open your mail and read it. There's a map of what's going to be affected, there's a schedule, there are frequently asked questions for people in that neighborhood to understand how this is going to roll out. We're opening those bids on Friday as well. There have been a very large number of contractors have pulled bids. We were up to 22?
Yep, 20 plus.
So we should get a good, you know, fair response. A lot of the big names you would expect to see in a project of this size started pulling packages over the weekend, so we'll see what they. packages over the weekend, so we'll see what they do, we'll see if they respond. And then as we go along, I'll be looking for the board's authorization, you know, we have a very restrictive policy around Code Red. We have always insisted that we would only use Code Red for real emergencies. You know, tornado, earthquake, horrible fire, something awful going on in town. I think in this particular case, community notification can be timely, it needs to be timely, and Code Red will be the best resource for it. So we're going to be working right in front of a row of homes. We want to be able to just reach out on the day or the 72 hours before that actually happens, with the timely communication that we know has reached those people, so Code Red is probably going to be the best way to do it. With that, I'll just turn it over to Bob for a little bit, so we can go over the schedule and what's going on, and then we'll close up with some forward-looking comments.
Matt, before we get to you, Bob, hey, Bob, people opt in to Code Red, right?
They can opt in, and there's a link on the town website. The letters that went to the households actually had the link in the letter, so if they want to type it in, type the URL, and they go directly to Code Red. Everybody can be mindful, it's a free service, so if after the construction project is over, you don't want to get the messages anymore, you can opt out, just as easily as you can opt in.
And we're happy with the number of enrollees we have with that? Are we pushing that up?
We constantly push that out there, because I find the biggest obstacle to this thing, and it's my biggest beef as the consumer, representative for the consumer, is I want the stinking banner on my phone to say Douglas Emergency Management, so that I know that it's a Douglas emergency, and I probably won't ignore it. So we get a lot of connects that are either pushed to voicemail or get, you know, hangups, because people see the, wherever it is, Colorado phone number, and they don't respond to it. Code Red's got to work on that, they just have to.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, no problem.
One quick question. Can you centralize the announcement? So say it's Gilboa Street, can adjust to that area, or does it go to everybody that's on Code Red?
So, Code Red is beautiful, and this, we can take a map and just highlight the area that you want to get the message, you can enter a recipient, like a list, with their contact info. There's a million ways that Code Red allows you to be very targeted with your communications. So the answer is yes.
Thank you.
You're on.
I'm on.
One more.
Okay, for the record, Bob Manaric, Economic Development, thank you. Just two things to add to, Matt, we're, the highway, the fire station message board is one additional message we've got, that's been running for a week, and then we'll transfer over to your annual town meeting report. Then once that meeting is done, we'll go back to announcing road construction. The other one is schools, we've been reading with the schools. I volunteered to meet with the superintendent and their staff on a weekly basis, just to find out what happened, where the problems were, hopefully none, and address them in the upcoming week. So it'll be a weekly thing until we progress through this construction. Once we get to the summer, there's still summer school, so this will be an ongoing That's basically, I think we've covered every possible, exhausted every possible means. My goal was for these two to not have one phone call, one complaint, so, and I hope we address that.
This is...
We're going to hold you to that.
You know that, you taught it, right?
You have set yourself up to fail, so.
That was my goal, that was my goal, I didn't say we... Aspiration.
No, 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 you said they weren't going to get any, that's what I heard.
I'm Googling, blank, nine, blank. I'm building a speed dialer.
Great, I'll give you Lisa's number.
Oh, I have it.
Well, you've been hearing me talk about the $8.5 million water sewer project for quite a while. Well, it's about ready to happen, and I think we're ready for it. Just to give you an update on the phases, there's basically three phases to this construction project. Phase one, we'll be supplying water, it's the, what we call is the extension of the Shell station water through Lackey Dam Road underneath 146 to service Blackstone Valley Logistics. And I'm only talking about the water portion, there is a sewer portion which will be following this, that's a month away, two months away. This is strictly just the water installation. So starting at the Shell gas station, phase one, will be on Lackey Dam Road, proceeding east by the on-off ramps under 146, I'll beam some more on-off ramps on the Route 146 northbound, and then connecting to the Blackstone Valley Logistics. We scheduled four weeks for that service, and starting May 9th, which you've seen on all the signs. Depending on who we pick this week, and what is on that contractor's mind as far as when they want to do the schedule, we don't think it's going to take four weeks. It might, but we've allowed four weeks just for a little weather problem, it's a little slop in there. It has to be night work per the Mass DOT permit, only a beam the ramps. We will try talking the contractor into doing that first connect at the Shell station at night as well, so we don't shut off the Shell station. I believe the hydrant is right in the middle of that island, so we will be only shutting off one of their two exits. If that's at night, that will help them during the day not affect their traffic. You go 100 feet, you're right into the on-off ramp for the southbound, Route 146 southbound. So they might as well just do that first 300 feet at night. If they put on two crews, they could progress into a day shift, they're working at night, get past the ramps, continue into a day shift. They might also work an entire length at night, and then move the equipment down to Gilboa Street, which I'll get into that, it was just phase two, and work daytime down there, and just go back and forth with two crews. That is the ideal situation. We will not know this until we have these pre-construction meetings, which will be not next week, but the week after, prior to about the town meeting time. Now, I was hoping to see you guys on May 3rd, but you just...
Get rid of that schedule.
You can come to May 2.
You can come May 3 if you want.
You'll be here right?
No, I'll leave the light on.
Okay.
So that is phase one. Now we're into June, first week in June, we've allowed four weeks for this phase as well. Phase two is beginning at the North Street-Gilboa Street intersection, which is where the bridge is. That will be a problem area, because we'll be shutting down almost four streets, and we're trying to do that on a Saturday night, Saturday, Saturday night into Sunday situation, to have the minimal impact on traffic, certainly not during rush hour. They have to pull out a couple of Ts, put in a bunch of gate valves, and at least get going the first 20-foot section of Gilboa Street, and then it'll be a lot easier. But it is going to be time-consuming just to get into that intersection. Bob Sullivan and I are working on details, fine details on that, getting ready for the pre-construction meeting. That's basically a simple run, the entire length down Gilboa Street to the first hydrant that's on the Mill property, the 120 Gilboa Street, the Mill. That first hydrant to the Shell station is all 12-inch already, so we're just replacing the 6-inch, which is about 70 years old, it's probably a 4-inch pipe at this point in time. That's phase two, and that is scheduled the month of June up to July 1st. That one, I don't think we're looking at ledge or any problems, we might be solving that. Now, again, if they work that conjunction phase one, we could be done with phase one and phase two in a month, but we won't know that until we get, find out who the contractor is, whether they're willing to put on two crews. Like Matt said, we've got 20 bids, 20-plus bids coming in, it's aggressive bidding right now. These contractors are calling StanTech right now and confirming that Douglas has pipe, and we are the only municipality that has pipe, so we're ahead of the game on that. Phase three, this will be a very complex phase, North Street from the Main Street to the bridge, Chow Street intersection. I just sat down with Bob Sullivan today, we were planning originally on starting at Main Street, working our way towards the bridge. We're thinking now, because of water pressure, we might want to start backwards, starting Chow Street, straighten out all those valves there. So when we shut down in front of Hayward Landing, again, it's only in front of Hayward Landing, not Hayward Landing, because there'll be bypass pipe. To feed that from a couple of directions, we're thinking of improving the Chow Street piping in that area, there's a hydrant, we're not sure where it goes to, the drawings are pretty vague on that, but get that all straightened out. So now we know where the water pressure's coming, and for that feed, to supply pressure, volume from both ends. And then we can work up to Main Street, or just do Hayward Landing, we're trying to go hydrant to high water. So phase three is scheduled right now, July 5th to July 29th. Again, this line will be done by July 31st or sooner. This line, the 16-inch line down North Street, 12-inch line all the way to Blackstone Valley will provide the necessary fire flow so they can get your occupational permit.
So we know North Street's, you know, it's a historic building, right? It's an old industrial building. It was full steam ahead, dam the torpedoes, back in the day. So we don't know what we're going to find once the road is up, whether there'll be workarounds, deadlines, you know, avoiding ledge rather than removing the ledge, we don't know what decisions were made back in the day, we'll find out once we have it all up. There are some places in there that are pretty narrow, too, but just, you know, sometimes people forget temporary service is installed for residences while this is going on. In communities where there's water, projects going on, you see them on the side of the street, they look like fire hoses, they're just much more durable, but they run along the side of the project so that everybody's, still got water in their home as the service line is corrected, then everything gets reconnected after it's done, so.
So we go from hydrant to hydrant with a bypass, in between hydrant, feeding those domestic services. That's an 8-inch line, that will be replaced with a 16-inch line. I assume there's some ledge in there, which is probably a 1-inch clearance right now, so when you put a 16-inch pipe in a 10-inch hole, it doesn't fit. So there will be, that could be challenging. As far as North Street, I think you're looking at probably three phases, it's narrow, I don't think you can have an excavator on one side with a 10-wheeler on the other side and have a third lane. You're probably going to be shutting down a third of North Street as you're in that area with detours.
You pushing it with an excavator next to a...
An excavator, period, or next to that retaining wall and the entrance to Hayward, there's not a lot of room there.
They had that water break several months ago, they shut down North Street with a detour, we might be doing the same thing.
Good.
So that's basically it, those are your three phases of construction. What I plan on doing is, every one of your meetings, give a quick synopsis of what we did in the past two weeks, to give you an update of where we are, what's been accomplished, and then let you know ahead two weeks. So it's a two-week look back, a two-week look ahead. And as people watch these meetings on video, they'll get a good idea of what's going on, what to expect. Bob, there isn't a chance in hell that we don't get a complaint, but we got you.
Well, at least we know that Matt and Lisa won't get a phone call.
No.
What Bob didn't say is he gave Tim's number for people to call.
They can call me, this has been a long time coming, I'll be glad to explain the rationale behind the temporary inconvenience, so.
Any anonymous calls, I'm going to sue it's anyone.
You can, there's been a lot of, Bob had asked me to throw the posting on the construction schedule up on the Douglas sites on social media, and there has been a lot of commentary already that's come in on it. Some positive, some not so much.
It's progress.
Yeah, it's progress.
Right.
It was going to happen...
There's got to be some pain, you know?
I mean, with these 70-year-old pipes, it was going to happen sooner or later.
Right. My personal favorite was, oh, this is 18 months at least. Like, sure, why not? You want to fix them?
Just the water will be three months, sewer's right behind it, and then natural gas, we're getting natural gas coming probably November. So it will be an ongoing process.
There was mention of the message board at the fire department getting changed to the town meeting for a week or whatever, but you also have the town election the following week, so you may want to reserve your space for a little bit longer.
But we have the message board, which is, you can change that message board, the highway department on North Street.
I'm talking about the sign in the fire department. Historically, everybody looks at that sign for the...
Yeah, for the election.
...town meeting and the election.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see that continue until...
Yeah, I think all Bob is saying is that the electronic message board can take over. If we're not using the fire station board, we have more than one.
When you first started, you said that it was, the fire station board was...
We're swapping out messages.
For the town meeting.
We'll have it up there for about a week, just so that people pay attention.
Yeah, right now it's just flopping, but whatever takes residence, that's fine with us. I think we have enough out there right now, once they see construction. The fire station is good, because it addresses the Connecticut and Rhode Island cars, I mean, it's not only residents, we're talking all motorists.
Right.
Thanks, Bob. Any questions?
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to this. It's been a long time coming.
So, to the wrap-up comment, I mean, I've already alluded to this, so I'll be quick about it, but a lot of work went into the EDA grant application, because it's more tedious than anything else, just gathering things that a lot of people typically don't ask to see, but it's all been done. And we're looking forward in the next two weeks, hearing a final conclusion to that It takes a lot of pressure off a lot of different other, you know, alternative funding sources to be able to leverage a federal grant. It also means, in terms of our back office operation and Gene's operation, because we face a single audit, we already did, because a single audit is a federal, it's an audit done with federal standards. If you don't spend more than 750 grand in federal money, you don't have to do it. Douglas hasn't done a single audit since 2016, because you haven't had that much federal assistance. This year you will, so there's a lot of work that Gene and her team will have to do, and Bob and I will have to do on our side, along with Bob Sullivan, to make sure we document everything perfectly, because we don't want any issues to come up after the fact. So it's not just get the money and spend it, it's, there's a lot of paperwork associated with it, and process. We can't, we cannot do change orders, we can't do things that might be very simple with our Mass Works funds, will be somewhat more complicated with the federal project. We have to be attached at the hip with the engineering crew in Philadelphia, make sure they approve of the things that we do.
Does the bidding, the bids that we will receive, do they take into account our desire for night work and...
That's all, that's in the bid document.
It's all part of that.
The Mass DOT permit is part of that bid document, they know there will be night work of being a ramp.
So some bidders may be more resident-friendly than others, and would they be weighted?
No, I mean, put it this way, there have been four rounds of questions in the bidding process. So each round, each time StanTech responds to a round of questions to clarify the bidding scheme, there's 10, 12 questions and answers that are published as part of the bidding process. So there's been a lot of information put out there. This is a contract that will be let out to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So if we get that lowest price, and we determine that they have been responsive to the specs, and they are responsible, in other words, they don't have a terrible track record, we have to give them the award.
It also has a defined timeframe, correct?
It does, I mean, the number one priority here is to not be operating when the schools are in session, because there are school buses that run through this part of town pretty actively during the day, and there's not a lot of room when they're moving around. So it was a really important consideration, I mean, it's construction season anyway, but we really want them out of here by August. I think the last thing that we should publicize, Bob, because not everybody appreciates it, I know that I didn't, so. When you put trenches under a road, and you put trench patch on top of it, you compact the soil around the pipe, you put trench patch on top of it, you let it settle for a full year, or for as long as you can, at least through a winter, before you do curb-to-curb paving. Because if you pave before everything's settled, you're going to end up with a terrible, botched paving job that wouldn't be worth a penny. So you wait for everything to settle, then you're able to go back, level it off, put a nice, strong coat of asphalt on, and not have the problem. not have the problems that you have now.
Personally, I think the trench patch will be better than North Street.
The trench patch will be better than North Street right now, absolutely.
But a trench patch allows for settling. Just go down Lackey Dam Road where they put in that gas line towards.
In Northbridge, yeah.
There are holes, but they come back and they fill those as it settles. That will all be ripped out one year after paper. Keep in mind, this is after the last trench. The last trench will be Eversource coming down the middle of the street. Down Lackey Dam Road, Gilboa, across the bridge, center of the highway. When they get to North Street in front of Hayward Landing, they'll transition to the sidewalk because we have a 36-inch stormwater drain coming right down the center of North Street. Can't put a gas pipe there, so they'll be coming up the sidewalk, which means we get a brand-new sidewalk.
I'm sure we're building this robustly, so the land behind, classic envelope and pines and the gravel will benefit from what we're doing now.
I think so.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's all you got?
That's all we got.
Okay. Do we have any open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
I have three.
Of course you do.
So two of them, I think I have the answer on them, but I'll, I'll still bring them up. First one is the status of the sign at Gregory's. We had a 60-day probationary period on it from, is that from when the sign was put up or from when the permit is issued?
I think it was from installation of the sign.
When the installation of the sign.
But the sign has been installed and there's no permit issued. So it's something that I would like to have addressed, which brings me to the second sign that's on, on my thoughts, which is dog offices. And the reason why, that came into my mind as they're going down 16. I noticed that they not only have their sign up, up and going, then now they're building some sort of retaining structure around so they can put all their flowers and there's a couple of boulders out there. And my understanding is we don't have that waiver or liability as of yet, since they're in the set, in the easement setback.
Right away.
Sound right away.
Right away. So.
All right, so we gotta get that.
Well, I think Lisa's already been working on it. I found that out today because I asked about it this morning.
Been in contact with Rich to get that.
Okay.
Written.
Yep. And the third thing is the town administrator, and I'm looking through his contract, I think we're a little behind schedule on his review. I'd like to get that scheduled. He's meeting his end of the obligation. I'd like to meet our end of the obligation and fulfill the contract.
All right. You put the, we have forms for his review, don't we?
I think we do.
Yeah.
We did them last time.
If you could email those out and then put that on the agenda for the 17th.
Anyway, we, no, no way we can work on that ahead of time. The only regard, you know, it doesn't matter if you got it. I was just thinking that if there was new bodies coming in and they're not familiar with them, it's not really fair for them to evaluate his performance. But considering the fact that unless we get a, a whole bunch of write-ins, you may be back.
I might be. It's possible. One never knows.
It's a defect in the contract, though, that probably should be dealt with both for the town administrator position and the finance director position. Uxbridge by town charter, a select board member may not evaluate the performance of the town manager in that town until they've had a full year of exposure to what goes on. So if they get elected and then they've only been there for a month and then the administrator's review comes up, they don't participate. To be blunt, you know, town government isn't that easy. And, you know, unless you've been a select board member before or a public official yourself and you're running in your hometown, just learning the ropes, who does what, what stands for what, it takes a while. So I don't know if it should be a year or not, but if we ever renegotiate my contract, I'll be looking for a clause, and certainly in Gene's case, looking for a clause where people who participate in the review have to have a minimum amount of time working with that person to be able to understand the performance requirements and then the performance rendered. It's only fair, really. I know, since I was reviewed by five out of seven people who'd only been in the job for two weeks. You know, that was.
You took that one.
What a circus that was.
So by having this on the 17th, my timing is good. By having this on the 17th, I made my year.
You just did.
Oh, there you go.
I'm just checking. No, it's just, he's overdue. And I know a lot's been going on with the pandemic and stuff, and I'd like to get him back up to speed as to where he's supposed to be.
Absolutely. I agree. All right. Do you have any more? Those were your three?
Let's see.
You sure you didn't have five?
He said three. I think it's limited.
I think it's limited.
One more thing. I did notice that Lisa and David both were generous enough to bring in peeps for hell.
You're spoiling it now because he's watching.
He's not.
I expected that out of the chairman, but he opted not to do it, so.
Oh, here we go.
Whoa, throwdown.
It's a challenge, Kevin.
It is.
Hell, yeah.
It is.
I would rise to it.
Peeps, pennies on the dollar right now, right?
Yeah.
You can get ones left over from the 60s because who could taste the difference? He's a connoisseur.
Okay, that has exhausted my.
Well, you mentioned the Gregory's sign.
Yes.
Have you, do you object to it as?
I have no objections at all, but we did set guidelines to it.
Right, so we should.
It seems to be running probably about 10 seconds, which doesn't sound like much, but if you pay attention, it's, it's the time going through. So if you wanted to split hairs over it, when he did come in before us, I asked that specific question, how often it was gonna change?
Yeah.
And he was gonna put the special up in the morning and then maybe change it at the end of the day. So now it's every 10 seconds. It doesn't appear to be a problem, but we are under review for it, so.
Right.
I would like to, before I reviewed anything, I'd like to see a permit in place. I do have a problem with businesses just doing what they want without getting the proper permits. And we need to support the building department, make sure that we stand behind them to enforce that. Because why get permits if you, if you don't need it?
That's fair.
You have a sign hanging over the sidewalk, too. Whose liability is that? They supposed to have a waiver as well?
No, good points.
It's all part of the inspection process.
Well, now you're digging deep.
No, just be, be illogical. You, is that bracket, what's it held up with? Flood shield to the boulder to the building? You don't know. You're hanging a sign up there. If it came down, hit you in the head, I'd be upset. Well, maybe not you, but.
Excuse me, hits me in the head, it's gonna bust the sign. It's nothing I.
I was gonna say, it's a perfectly busted up sign at that point.
Yeah, we have the liability of replacing the sign.
Yeah.
Hope it doesn't fall on me.
All right. But in seriousness, I just like to see that the, we follow through and get the permits that we're supposed to get. And the, the dog office sign, the electricity, electricity's been run to the thing. No permit yet, so. It's gonna be hard pressed to get me to get a permit if we don't have anybody else getting them.
Fair enough. Are there any other open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
From anyone other than Mike?
From anyone other than the selectmen, Fitzpatrick? I'll do one. The access road between the two schools, do we have an actual estimate cost to that?
It's old, but Bill kind of had an estimate for that, yeah.
Wasn't this?
It was very reasonable. To connect the two is very reasonable. What's that?
The solar farms.
They were supposed to pay for that.
Yes, they were.
But.
I remember that clearly.
Where are they? You know, I get every six months a request for conversation on the phone. I'm just too practical a person. I want to see a permit application. If I don't see that, then I don't believe it.
Right.
Maybe I got scarred from being economic development guy in the city, but if I had every good idea that walked into my office, my gosh, in Saco it would be a shiny city on a hill.
Do you know how much that is off the top of your head?
So when Bill did it, he specked out a, a loose gravel road, you know, typical dirt road.
It's not true.
And one was, one was 170,000, the other was closer to half a million. Because coming from Depot Street or however you want to get over there from this area to the main campus is a big undertaking.
That's the Martin Road one.
A short, a short route just connecting the, the outer edge of the middle school campus with the outer edge of the high school driveway was not expensive. That was more a question of the cross-country trail and what was gonna go where and how we're gonna work around that space in between the two school campuses. But that was not prohibitively expensive at all.
Yeah, it was the Martin Road section.
Martin Road was more expensive.
Which kind of ties it all together nicely.
Well, yeah.
But if you had to have just the one, that short little span is infinitely helpful.
It's extremely helpful. Gives you two ways in and out of both places. I mean, you already have two on one of them, but it would give you that opportunity to, more space to maneuver.
We should bring our solar friend in.
Bring him in on the 3rd.
I was gonna say, geez, look. On the 3rd? I was right there, buddy.
Yeah, we're not meeting on the 3rd.
All right. I'm not even gonna ask if there's any more open session items. I have a motion, Mr. Chairman. If it's for a German, I'd love to hear it. So move that.
Second.
Hardly.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Hardly aye.